We have about 30 seconds, Palmer? Or can we go ahead and go? We're getting close enough. I always jumpstart a little ahead of the curve, so I apologize for that. The mayor's not here today. I'm the mayor, Pro Tem Sarah Roberts-McCarley. Thank you so much for being here. We have several proclamations and a couple of presentations we're going to start with this morning. So Scott Bishop or Dave Markquart? Did I say that right, Dave? Markquart. If y'all want to go ahead and come up and start your presentation for Lakeland Electric, they're going to talk to us about our powers on with solar is their presentation, and we're really excited to have you here and walk us through this. Good morning.
Good morning. How is everyone? So not a LE presentation on solar, right?
So sorry.
No, it's okay. It's what it looks like. What this really is is a collaboration between Community Economic Development, Brian Ruiz's folks, Dale Markwart, and ourselves into how our solar customers are becoming more ubiquitous and then our ability to meet their needs affordably and reliably. So we had to take a hard look at ourselves as this thing starts to grow and make sure we can meet the need. So we've heard frustrations, some difficulties, right? We need to educate, engage, and inform our customers on making those choices for their homes and then how we implement those safely and effectively. So that's what this presentation is.
Thank you.
We're okay. So over the past decade, solar's increased 33%. If you look at the light blue growth, it's been primarily utility-scale solar. That's where your real economy is a scale kick in. That's where your real value add is. That's where the growth has really happened. But if you look at that dark blue section at the bottom, that's residential solar. That's been growing exponentially, too. Looks like around 45% of all new capacity being installed on the grid today is solar. That's a huge 10 times or 11 times increase from what we used to have a decade ago. Overall, the entire grid is controlled by 5% solar now, and that's going to continue to grow. Reason being, cost, right? So this subsidized, incentivized reduction in costs, as well as some reduction in the technology prices and costs, have really kind of pushed the adoption. California's leading the way, then Texas and us, but if you look, that's just really population level, too. 13% of U.S. homes by 2030 are expected to have solar, and I'm actually kind of okay with that number. Even for us, we've seen the growth kind of hit. We're at 1%. I'll talk about that later, but as this adoption's increasing, our numbers are increasing, and it's a real opportunity for us to kind of make sure that we can meet the needs of our customers as the resourcing continues to grow. At this point, Dale Markwart's going to come up and talk about the, what the city's been doing to help the permitting processes and what we've done from evolve the systems, and I'll come back and tell you what Lakeland Electric's doing.
Good morning. I'm Dale Markwart, the city's billion official. Here in Lakeland, we've seen a huge surge in solar permitting applications over the past two years. We went from 55 applications in 2020 to 285 in 2022. As you can see, that's five times the increase. But with growth does not come without a challenge. All we receive, we all received many of the same emails last summer from residents who felt the city permitting process was too challenging. The concerns generally follow themes, three themes: the number of complaints, code compliant requirements, the turnaround in time, and the difference between Lakeland and other First of these points is easy. The city does not have any unusual or additional solar requirements. When we review plans and installations, it's to assure compliance with the minimum safety standards set by the Florida Building Code, the National Electric Code, and the Fire Prevention Code. Licensed engineers and installers should not have a problem ensuring that solar systems meet the proper specifications and codes. Properly designed and installed solar systems are remarkably safe, but like any electrical systems, they carry a live load. Short circuit, reverse currents, and ground fault all can cause structural fires. Improper labeling or configuration can put electrical current where it shouldn't be, creating a safety hazard for everyone. At the permitting level, the city is navigating two challenges: the volume of solar applications and the quality of these applications. The city received 438 permit applications in '21 and '22. They came from 92 different contractors. This is not unique to Lakeland. Solar activity is growing at this pace throughout Florida. Some applications received were well-done, and we were able to issue the permit fairly quickly. Others required lots of staff time and multiple rounds of reviews. The biggest obstruction to quick turnaround is having to return plans to applications for corrections multiple times. As you can see from the first chart on the left is by rounds. In '21 and '22, only about half of the applicants got it right the first time or corrected everything with only one re-submitting. Once it gets into multiple rounds of review, the cost adds up for the contractor, the consumer, and the city. The pie chart shows an average time between submission and issuance of the permit. So when you send it back to application, we have no control over how long it takes to be re-submitted. In a moment, I'll walk you through what we have done so far and what our plans are planning next. But at this time, we have been working since last summer. Looking at this year, you can see that it has already made a big difference. There are still lots of different vendors coming in, many for the first time, but 84 of the applicants have approved over this year needed one round revision at most, and 41 applicants received their permit within 10 days. The big question looked at last summer was how can we streamline the permit process without compromising safety standards? We support solar, but it must be done right. So our challenges have been to help contractors help us, which in turn helped the customer. Step one was research. Understand that our issues are not unique. We looked at almost 120 jurisdictions around the country to find out what works. Step two was reviewing all of our processes and documents, looking for things we can do to make it more easier for contractors to meet code requirements. We created a solar-only application instead of a general all-purpose electrical permit application. We simplified checklist, cutting the word count, adding links, putting illustration, illustrated examples, and different labels that are needed. We also create a fill-in-the-blank packet to help applicants complete their application During our research, we learned about Soul Smart, a national program funded by the U.S. Department of Energy. Soul Smart provides local governments the best practice to make solar adoption easier and more affordable. Our third step was to research out Soul Smart for guidance. They reviewed everything we had done and made a few additional recommendations, which we followed. The result was a silver designation for the city of Lakeland, realizing that we are following the national best practices in our solar permitting and inspection process, as well as our planning and zoning, government operation, and community engagement efforts. We received a score of 165, which gets us almost to gold status. We are working on that next. As you can see, Tampa and Sarasota are bronze. Orlando is gold. We're not done. Our next step includes exploring ways to automate the solar permit review process. The biggest benefit would be reducing the back and forth of reviews. We are, we are at early conversation with the National Renewable Energy Laboratory about a tool that could potentially automate 75 to 80% of our solar permit applications. Commercial installations and complex residential configurations would still need to be examined manually, but for this standard installation, it's kind of like TurboTax for solar permitting. The applicants would go through a series of screens, inputting details about roof, the panels, the inverter, the mounting system, and so forth. If there is an incorrect calculation or a component that is size wrong, they would get an error message and not be able to move forward. Once they correct it, Solar App Plus would forward the complete file to our website for final approval. There's no cost to the city to use the software, but that applicant would pay a $25 fee. Once we have the new automated process in place, we will be reaching out to our solar contractors who have applied for a solar permit in the last two years to provide training to help them understand the most common mistakes and how to avoid them. We will be partnering with Lakeland Electric on a customer support campaign. We also will be providing regional leadership to all the cities and counties in our area that are dealing with the same challenges. Through the Building Official Association, I've already shared some of our ideas, and there is a lot of interest. With that said, we are here to support the future of solar. And now, Ali, we'll pass it back to Scott.
Fantastic stuff. So just like the city took a hard look at its processes, reviews, strategies, how we implement, Lakeland Electric did, too. We're also seeing the growth under service territory. So beyond the city, outside of the city, 40 to 50 permits a month are coming through us, and last month, we did 100. So as those numbers continue to scale, we've had a few 75 months. It took us between 2012 and 2022 to get 500 customers. We did another 500 in the previous two years, and this year, we may put in close to another thousand. So from a resource perspective and our ability to meet that need, we've had to kind of reassess and move things around and then get better at how we do what we do. So that's the challenge to ourselves. We celebrated 1,000 customers. I want to say it was earlier this year. If you, on your way out, you'll see out this hallway, you'll see the three orange kind of, that was our customers throwing water balloons at painted canvases so that they participated in the process, and you'll also see the Soul Smart banner hanging. So we celebrated the fact that we finally did 1,000, but the next 1,000 is going to come a lot faster. Now, remember, we've got five utility-scale solar fields. These are where the cost value add is, okay? All these in conjunction, Bella Vista, the airport, and on top of our P funding are a total of 15 megawatts, right? That's what we provide back to the grid. It's a good bit of energy. Our customers are now at seven megawatts. So if we double that number again, it could be by the end of this year or next that our customers have as much solar on their homes as we do sitting on the ground in utility scale. So it's go at all levels. So we got to remember, not just implement residential, but we got to look for some other opportunities to put utility scale down, and we got to look for opportunities for community and industrial solar programs that we can use going forward. Just like the city, please take a hard look at your process, please get better. We've done the same thing. So once you're past permit and you're on to us, it's the interconnect agreement. We've got the same requirements they do: human, fire, and building safety. That's all we're doing here. So the interconnect agreement is different, though. It represents the amount of megawatt you're giving me. I need to make sure my infrastructure is good, my transformers and wire size is okay. I need to know you're there, so I put you on the, on our GS grid, so when my crews go with buckets in the air, they know where you're at. So it's really about coordinating that effort. Let me know you're there and how much energy you have, so that I know when I have crews in there that they're going to be okay. The contractor and engineer velocity is pretty impressive. 94 different applicants doing 384 permits, right? There are some good ones in the territory that are going over and over again, but then there's a lot of in and out, too. And so we're trying to manage those folks, teach them our process at light speed, get them up to success, and make sure that our customers are successful with that. How do we, how do we portalize some of this, right? So the issue is our on-base software has, allows us to kind of, right now, we're sending documents back and forth between the customer. Give me your email address, I'll send you a PDF, fill this out, send it back to me. That's a little archaic. So we're trying to build a web portal that allows customers to self-serve, runs them through the processes and steps, allows them to drop documents back in and forth, and we increase our efficiency. So as this thing's kind of grown, we've recognized the fact that we need to redo our processes , too, and get better, or else it's, that resource consumption is going to be too high. And lastly, we need a path going forward, right? This is the education, engagement, information piece that we need to make sure we're getting to every person out there. We need to make sure that the folks know what's happening. Here's the five questions to ask yourself. This is for the public. What's your monthly bill? And what's your monthly cost of solar? Look, it's not free, both from a capital asset perspective or a power bill. Make sure that you know what your cost of energy is on a monthly basis and make sure you know what you're going to make as a payment on those, on the solar panels. We've had some folks on the reverse side already get solar. Who's the vendor? Make sure you know that they're going to be around in 10 years. You're making a seven- to 10-year investment, right? You want to make sure that in 10 years or in five, when you need to replace a couple panels, that somebody's there to help you. Make sure they're reputable. Make sure your roof's right for solar. If you're covered in trees and you're all northern-facing roof, you might not want to put solar on there. Or talk about cutting down trees to put up solar? That's an interesting concept. Lastly, what's your goal? So if there is a financial return, it's seven to 10 years. Or is it about sustainability and using less fossil fuel for you? Either way, there's cases to be made. All right, so we're rethinking this whole thing, right? We're rethinking what we do. It's no longer an interconnect agreement with a customer after they permitted. This is a welcome to the team, you are now a grid operator, right? Believe it or not, you're actually putting energy back onto the grid for us, and we're crediting for that. So we need to make sure that they understand our relationship just changed and that they're part of the team that we're on. We get them through the process. As soon as we find out there's a permit being pulled, we say, welcome, here's a package, here's the processes, these are the steps, these are the things you need to do. We celebrated the 1,000 customers, right? It's going to go faster to the 2,000. And then lastly, we put out a commercial, because we need more information in the hands of our customers to make sure they understand what's happening.
What in the world? You didn't check the dimensions of those, did you?
And who are you? I'm from Lakeland Electric. You were thinking about buying solar panels, weren't you?
Actually, I was.
Lakeland Electric has energy auditors just waiting to answer any questions you may have about solar and electric needs, so things like this don't happen to you. We've done this over 1,000 times. If you're thinking of installing solar panels, call before you install. Lakeland Electric, power for life.
Proud of all this, both from the efficiency perspectives, how we've gotten better in our ability to reach out and make a campaign for our customers. So if we continue to do this, we continue to get better as we go, we continue to have a product that we affordably and reliably serve our customers, and that's, at the end of the day, what we're doing. Any questions? Me or Dale.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Dale, very much. Commissioner Reed.
Thank you, Scott. I don't know who needs to answer the question. You guys see advertisements all the time about solar being free in Florida. Is that, is that a fact or is that a just a point?
No, ever. Anything free? No. So that's the, that's the sales pitch, right? So just like, just like any other thing that you buy in the, in the universe, right? There's sales guys that have tactics that try to get you to agree to something, buying anything, right? So solar's not unique. It's just sales pitches that are out there that tell you things. There is subsidies, state incentives, tax rebates. It doesn't ever get you free. And at the end of the day, we're 12 hours of dark, so the solar's not working then. And so they got to remember that, too. And so the, the sales pitches have been tough. You've seen probably papers put out, Better Business Bureau's attacking some of these guys, and, you know, they're trying to get after the shady folks, but just like any other thing that's sold, there's people out there trying to make a quick buck.
Thank you. Another question, they're getting, and things people need to consider. We had solar on our home and pool, and we had to replace our roof. And they charge you to take it down, and it was too expensive to put back up to warrant the thing. So people really need to consider with hurricanes and your re-roofing, you better have a brand-new roof if you're going to put it on.
Trying to get these roofer contractors out here to line up with the solar, so as the roofs get replaced, they get solar on the home, because that's about the only, if you need 10 or 15 years, and right now, the insurance companies are having to replace in 15, so if your roof is 10 and you decide to put solar on, you're not going to make it. And then you got to off and on it, right? So during roof redo, line up with some solar and get it done at that point. That's your point of inflection you need to kind of capture.
I just want to make people know, be aware of that.
It's a big deal.
We're looking at putting it on the side of our house in the yard somewhere, but I know that's irrelevant at this point, but thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Commissioner McLeod.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Dale. It's helpful to hear what all is happening in, in the area of solar. And Scott, you mentioned that on the residential side, soon, we could have as much power coming back to the grid as we do as a utility. Is that a trend that we're seeing in the industry as residential is, more of that's coming online, or is, does that just make a case for us to increase, you know, the amount of solar on the utility side?
It's a national trend, right? So as the costs have driven down, and while there's still money out there for them to get a hold of, folks can leverage that opportunity and put it on their house. It's a seven, you got to have the folks that have the seven-to-10-year capital investment capability, but nationally, this stuff's going on. So we're not unique that way. I saw a home builder actually have them on and install. So as the homes were being popped up, they were dropping solar and batteries right into the homes, and so it's a trend that's not unique. It's going forward, our relationship to our customers is going to have to change. It's happening everywhere.
Or Madden.
Thank you both for the presentation. I was curious with, you mentioned battery storage here, now with contractors kind of doing that both, but have we had, number one question is, have we had an increase in the number of battery storage that they're putting, you know, in tandem with the solar panels to get a little bit more energy out of them? And then secondly, is our system, when we connect to the grid, dynamic enough to be able to? I've seen the charts with the cloud cover and how, you know, little solar actually is going into the system on a cloudy day or on a rainy day. So do we, is that pretty dynamic? Like, are we getting every bit of that solar in and out of the cloud coverage? So that, those two questions, battery storage and then also that, how does that work with our grid?
So batteries are increasing. It's, there's, it's still fractional to the amount of solar installs. The, the real business case is solar and battery, right? We've got customers that are truly using home energy management systems and leveraging the entire thing. As far as our ability to respond to solar on the grid as the variable resource penetrates, we're really good until 2030 with that 13% hits us. Really good. So the rice engines that we're installing are 100% the solution to that problem. High, fast ramp from zero, some 0 to 60 in a few seconds. And so they're there to meet the reliability needs of the variable resource penetration.
First question, Dale. Thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome.
Is there part of the inspection process when they, when they're setting solar on there? Do they do, is the roof attachment part of the inspection?
Yes, there is. We have one, the building inspectors go out there. All the roof attachments are. And they, during the permit process, they submit, you know, electrical drawings and also structural drawings to make sure that the attachments are put down properly, and that's what we review. They're done by an engineer. They sign and seal their drawings and...
Good, thank you. As a, as a roofing contractor, and I think of your, your question there, I mean, we, it's amazing how many roofs we replaced that have had either attachments that failed or that, you know, they didn't, didn't take seriously. And, you know, we do have good partnerships with solar companies just for that very reason, that, you know, their business is the solar and ours is the roofing, so having that in conjunction has been helpful. What is the percentage, you know, as we look at this and, you know, it's a small percentage at this point, right? 500, then 1,000, then 2,000 of our 100-plus thousand. As we're looking at investing, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars in our own power generation, at what point does the percentage tilt so that we are no longer, I mean, we have to have capital to be able to put capital improvements back in, but when we have a certain percentage of people that are on solar and not taking our power significant enough to offset that, do we know what percentage that might be?
We're good to like 2035, and then we got to start having, but we need to ask those questions sooner than later, right? So at least 2035 and beyond. We're, we're at 25 or 30% solar penetration on the grid. It starts to strain your reliable resources that are dispatchable. And then we're going to need more batteries, and we're going to need more management and better software to kind of make sure this entire thing is kind of being leveraged for both the customer and the utility, and that we were able to meet the needs, keeping the lights on.
And then with the EVs are, you know, are they going to have their power stations, charging stations, EV powered, you know, solar-powered, or are they going to come from the grid? I know there's a lot of questions we don't know, but that's just a concern that I have as I went out, and I'll talk about this at the end. I went out to the Why Mama Power...
Microgrid.
...Microgrid last week, and that was, that was super interesting. But, you know, those things concern me not from a innovation standpoint, but from a, we're investing in one direction. It's like us getting rid of coal, right? You get rid of coal and you go in this direction, and, and sometimes, you know, we want to make sure that we're not caught. So, good. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Simmons.
Could you explain the relationship between, excuse me, could you explain the benefit of the solar in relation to the, the, the electrical grid that...
During the, during the day when the sun's out, we don't have to burn gas to make energy for our customers. They meet all their needs with the current solar on their home, plus they push some back onto the grid, so we can ramp down our generation. As the sun starts to set, we got to crank the gas back up to actually meet their needs when they go home, and at night, when the solar's not working. So the, as the consumption's off the grid during the day, we can, we have a lower cost as a result of not having to spend to do it. As it comes back off at night, we've got to kick back on. So we're changing time of day when we're actually using solar. As a result of solar being out, we're changing how we run the business day and night.
Follow-up. So that's the benefit to, to the electric company. What, what about the benefit to the customer?
We got a cheaper power bill.
When, even though they're paying for both solar and electric?
That's the trick.
The, the combined is less, less...
There's a seven-to-10-year return on your investment.
Okay.
Thank you both so much. And I think it's really important, the engage, educate, inform the public, that I really appreciate both of you walking us through all of this. I think you did an excellent job in the presentation and mapping out the expectations for the building side and the contractor side and permitting, as well as, you know, the consumption side and for the general public. One thing that there's never, to Commissioner Reed's point, there's never a quick fix, there's never anything free, and there are always unintended consequences. And those could be positive unintended consequences or negative unintended consequences. So I really just caution the public into diving deep into your, you know, how you want to do this. If you're choosing to do solar, yes, from a sustainability standpoint, but to your point, if we're cutting down trees to have solar for our house, that's questionable sustainability outcome. And we also need to understand the batteries, and if people really research cobalt and all these other entities that are in our battery storage units now and in our batteries explicitly, they're being, they're, they're being pillaged from other places in the earth. So it's a really huge, you know, ecosystem of how we can do all of these things and making them synergistic and bringing them all together. So I really appreciate the time you guys took in doing this presentation. Thank you so much for coming and sharing. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So Bill Cohn, if you want to come up, and we'll do our beautification awards, we'll have you come forward to the monitor. I'm going to take all my papers.
Morning, everyone. We're going to do our beautification awards for this month, and I think first up will be the residential award. Well, here it is. This is a great example of informal landscaping, all these beautifully flowered plants, succulents, butterfly attractors. It's just a great example of informal landscaping. And this award goes to... And this award goes to Nancy Ross, who resides at 1508 Mariner Road. Is, is Nancy here to receive the award today? I think she is, yes.
Come on up, Nancy.
Yeah. Oh, they're gonna pay one of us up here on the. Well, did a great job on your informal landscaping. It's really a work of art. Do you have anything else to say about it?
I thought this was a joke to begin with because this winter was the worst it looked. And I felt really bad between the hurricanes, the freeze, and then I had the glue for a month. So nothing was getting done. And then I get a beautification award. And I thought, oh, this is about it. It's my name and address. I couldn't believe it. They did stand babbled ways. That was good. But yes, I do appreciate it very much. And that it was a complete surprise to me. I don't, I don't know who nominated me, but I do owe them, at least the chicken sandwich.
And we're gonna take a picture right here.
Let's all come together this way in the center, please.
Three, two, one.
That's beautiful, darling.
Thank you so much.
I think you did a great job. It was just a great example of this formal landscaping.
I enjoy very much being out because I'm so happy. This is how I garden, too. I just don't know when to quit. I have neighbors who are loving it and stop and talk to me about it all the time. And then I've got a few that go, I'm a minimalist, but I really don't think you need to have so many plants up in your yard. So I, it's my joy. It's my therapy. And I totally love being outdoors. I've waited for years to get to the point where I could be outside. So, and they multiply. What you're looking at, you think they're plants, but they're rabbits. Thank you so much. We really appreciate it.
Now, we're gonna have our commercial award for this month. And it goes to Black &amp; Brew, located at 205 East Main Street. Their outdoor eating area is surrounded by beautiful containers of plants, flowering plants, all sorts of plants. And it's just a real interesting thing. And also, the, I noticed the Black &amp; Brew at 4209 South Florida Avenue was recently beautifully landscaped as well. So, great job. Adds to the beauty of downtown Lakeland.
And so Michael McArthur's here. Do you have anything you wanna say about your beautiful site? We love it right on the sidewalk.
Sure. I'd love to take credit for all that beautiful landscaping. But that's actually the work of Julie at the Greenhouse Garden Store. So hit her up if you want to reproduce this in some way. And also my parents who do a good job of helping us taking care of, especially the south side. So, yeah, thanks. This is an honor.
All righty. Three, two, one.
Awesome. Good work. Thank you so much. Okay, we'll move on to our proclamation section. Is Chris Freeman here? No. I'm gonna call an audible, if that's okay, and move the airbag to the end. And so we'll go ahead and welcome all of our friends who are here to celebrate Juneteenth. If y'all wanna come up to the center, we're excited to have you all here today. Miss Moore Bailey's coming. We'll go ahead and have you all come up. And we're gonna make a semicircle, I think. You look so nice. Here, I'm gonna keep bending. We'll make an arc. We'll have Mr. Ross go to the back because he's taller. We can see. Oh, there's our VIP. Whereas for 158 years, Juneteenth Day has been the most recognized African-American holiday observance in the United States known, known as Emancipation Day. Emancipation cap celebration, Freedom Day, June-June, Juneteenth, Independence Day, or Juneteenth. This day commemorates the survival due to the God-given strength and determination of African-Americans, most of whom came to this country stacked in the bottom of slave ships in a month-long Atlantic Ocean journey known as the Middle Passage. And whereas approximately 11,500,000 African-Americans survived the voyage to the New World, while the number that died may be larger, only to then be subjected to tearing apart of families and forced into slavery after survival, which continued for more than 200 years in the United States. And whereas the Juneteenth commemorates the day all enslaved in the South by Major Henry and the United States colored troops posted General Order Number Three on the 19th of June, 1865, at Reedy Chapel AME Church in Galveston, Texas. This action was two and a half years after the signing of the Emancipation Proclamation by President Abraham Lincoln. And whereas the phrase "until all are free, none are free" was an oft-repeated maxim used to highlight the significance of the end of the era of slavery in the United States. And in 1991, Representative Alzo J. Reddick Senior of Orlando authored state of Florida legislation proclaiming Juneteenth observance, which was signed into law by Florida Governor Lawton Childs in May 1991. And whereas in 1973, Doris Moore Bailey was first introduced to Juneteenth Day history during a horseback trail ride and locally in June 1992, founded the Juneteenth Committee, which ultimately organized the first Juneteenth observance in Florida. Whereas the Fourth of July and the 19th of June fully complete the cycle of freedom for America's Independence Day observances. And whereas Juneteenth Committee has donated several authors' books to Catholic schools, bicycles at New Bethel Anomy Church and Harmony MB Church, provided trips to Zora Neale Hurston Festival in Eatonville for senior citizens and youth, honored more than 272 people in Lakeland and Polk County with awards and gifts, established a Juneteenth Book Scholarship through the Polk Education Foundation, assisted with John Taylor Scholarship, sponsored historical movies, health fairs, political forums, rodeos, and partnered with Catholic charities and other serving organizations. And whereas this 31st Annual Lakeland Juneteenth Observance, whose theme is Juneteenth Wave of Freedom, celebrates the hope of continuing racial healing, reconciliation, restoration, and justice through the National Day of Reconciliation and Healing from the Legacy of Slavery. Therefore, H. William Muttz, Mayor of the City of Lakeland, and on behalf of its entire commission, do hereby proclaim the 19th of June, 2023, as Juneteenth Day in Lakeland. And all citizens are encouraged to reflect upon the value of freedom and join this celebration. Congratulations. I'm gonna slide over here with you.
Okay, thank you. Well, thank you much. And we, I'm gonna pass some mic around and certify if I can just at least identify who they are. So I'm Doris Moore Bailey, and we are celebrating the official Juneteenth. 31 years here in Lakeland, started in 1992. So we're very happy about that. And of course, this year, we have many activities. We start off on the 17th with Juneteenth in the Park from 10:00 to 2:00 p.m. And then inside of the building, Colvin Bush Building, from 4:30 to 7:30. Mrs. Minister Nidra Butler will have an event inside of there. She and, it's gonna be unique. It's gonna be different than last year when you were there. But we encourage and invite each of you to come. Then on the 23rd of June, we will be at Polk State College with Norris Riggs. And he will be having a Motown fashion show and I don't know what else he'll be doing, but there. And then on the 24th of June, at Polk State College again, we will be honoring students, scholars, and also recognizing D9. D9s are African-American leaders of the fraternities and sororities. And then also on the 24th, we will have a Corvette car show at the Promenade, somewhere around there, wherever. Over, yeah, right over there. So we're pleased about that. And then to end up, the first time ever here in Lakeland, we will have a film festival at Polk State College as well. Starts at 11 o'clock in the morning, ends at 8:00 p.m. So we have many movies that are submitted to us via Film Freeway and just outstanding documentaries as well, historical insignificant. So all of that is coming up. You don't wanna miss anything. You wanna be a part of that. And so let me start to my right, and I'll start with Attorney Glover, and just move it around if you will.
You wanna say your name real quick?
I'm Kenneth Glover, one of the past presidents of the Lakeland Branch of the NAACP. I've known Ms. Bailey since I've been here. And we wanna congratulate you, Doris, for the work you've done, for the preservation of our freedom and the emancipation that we have and enjoy. Thank you.
I'm Trudy Rankin with the League of Women Voters.
Jo Shim with the League of Women Voters. And we're very much looking forward to participating this year.
Bryson Bailey, the president for the Lakeland Juneteenth.
Nidra Butler, owner of Creative Touch Beauty Salon.
Jacqueline Speed, and we just thank you so much for this honor.
Drexler Robinson, member of the organization, CCOD, Dundee, Florida.
Tyrone Henderson, Vice President of CCOD in Dundee, Florida.
Morris Shastain, Gladys Leggett Neighborhood. And I've been to some of these other events that Ms. Bailey has done. The Buffalo Thing out there, was that Almondale? Yeah, but almost.
Oh, you mean the rodeo, is it?
Yeah, the Buffalo Thing, whatever, yeah.
How you doing? Herb Smith from Glover Productions.
Addison Ross from St. Luke. I'm proud to be with Ms. Bailey up here, and she's doing a fantastic job.
Good morning, Julia Taylor, President of the Marlberry Concerned Citizen Organization in Marlberry. And we'll be having our first Juneteenth. We thank Mrs. Bailey for getting us involved. Thank you.
Dr. Karen Albert Warren. I'm a member of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, Kappa Omakona Mega Chapter, also the Lakeland Branch in AAACP.
Hi, I'm Marquita Burchette, better known as Kiki. I'm with Pinkster Entertainment Group. And we will be doing the free, I wanna emphasize, free for the public, of entertainment and fashion show hot dog-eating contest. And all of that, that will be done on the 17th at Jackson Park. And we will be doing the entertainment and all of that on the 23rd. And I will be leaving tickets here, because that's my job. So I'll be leaving tickets here for anybody who needs tickets.
Gotta work right over here.
My name is Lola King, and I'm here to support my friend Doris Moore Bailey. I'm supporter of the Lake, North Lakewood Neighborhood.
Well, thank you all so much. Is there one site where they can go and see all the events online?
Yes, you could go to the Juneteenth website, and that's juneteenflorida.org. Juneteenflorida.org, and everything is there.
Awesome. So now we'll take a picture. I don't know how you wanna line us up.
Okay. Can we get kind of layers, kind of shorter people in the front, the taller people in the back, please? Squeeze in.
You're right here. There we go.
Yes, probably. Back and just move it.
Can you move it a little bit? Not much.
Okay. We'll make it work. All right. Come back a little more. All right. Three, two, one. Let's do it again, then. Three, two, one. All right.
Thank you all so much. We appreciate it. Thank you. We can have Polk Pride start heading this day. Thank you. So now we'll have LGBTQ and Pride Month, which will be celebrated today, June 5th, 2023. Here to accept the proclamation is Scott Gira.
Scott had a meeting with the police chief, so we're gonna accept our.
Okay, great. And you can introduce yourselves in just a second.
Thank you.
Andrew. Whereas Lakeland, Florida is representative of the global community consisting of diverse cultures, races, creeds, genders, and sexual identities which work toward peace and understanding. And whereas Lakeland LGBTQ+ residents, students, city employees, and business owners contribute to the vibrant, innovative, culturally-inclusive, world-class community and its diversity. And whereas legislative, legislation exists concerning equal rights and protections for all citizens, including the LGBTQ+ community throughout the state of Florida and the United States. And whereas members of the LGBTQ+ community sometimes face discrimination based on their status. And whereas the organization of PFLAG of Polk County envisions a world where diversity of all people is respected, valued, and affirmed, including sexual orientation, gender identity, and gender expression. And whereas the Lakeland Youth Alliance provides a safe space for LGBTQ+ youth and their straight allies within Polk County. And whereas Lakeland Polk Pride, PFLAG of Polk County, and the Lakeland Youth Alliance conduct various cultural, educational, and entertainment activities to promote increased acceptance and respect for diversity. Now, therefore, H. William Muttz, City of Lakeland Mayor, hereby recognizes June as LGBTQ+ Pride Month in Lakeland, Florida. And if you wanna introduce yourselves, really quick?
Good morning. My name is Austin Briggs. This is Kerry P. Valdez. We're on the Board of Directors with Polk Pride, Florida. We just wanted to say thank you to this commission for issuing this proclamation since 2015. Our inception, doing so is an act of solidarity with Lakeland residents who are members of the LGBTQ+ community. We would like to invite everyone out to our main event, Polk Pride in the Park, here in Moon Park, on June 17th from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. This is a family-friendly event with over 100 vendors and live entertainment. It's also free, so feel free to come out. More additional details can be found at polkpridefl.org or by following us on Facebook and Instagram at Polk Pride FL. Thank you again.
Thank you so much. We'll take a picture really quick.
All right, three, two, one. Thank you all so much.
Next, we have National Garden Week, which is June 5th. Here to accept the proclamation is Marlene Hay, President of the Garden Club of Lakeland. Thank you all. You can come on up. Whereas gardeners have a passion for nurturing the beauty and resources of the earth through the planted, planting of seeds, the care of plants, and the richness derived from their efforts. And whereas gardeners add beauty, splendor, fragrance, and nutrition to our lives through the growing of herbs, vegetables, foliage, and flowers. And whereas gardeners work to preserve our country's traditional spirit of independence and initiative through innovation, resilience, hard work. And whereas gardeners advocate the importance of all creatures, large and small, that share our world and their roles in a balanced and productive ecology. And whereas gardening furnishes a challenging productive activity for our citizens, both for those just learning as well as those having years of experience. And whereas gardening promotes a healthy lifestyle that lasts for a lifetime, helps reduce stress from other areas of life, teaches that rewards can come from diligent efforts. And whereas members of the Garden Club of Lakeland have made numerous contributions to the City of Lakeland through their labors. And whereas the members of the Garden Club of Lakeland have donated their time by volunteering at the City of Lakeland Nursery, landscaping Habitat for Humanity Homes throughout the city, planting trees in our parks, donating horticulture scholarships to students attending Lakeland Colleges, and providing nature camperships to Lakeland schoolchildren. And whereas the members of the Garden Club of Lakeland help by trimming rosebushes at the Maine Branch Library, which I love, and they're so beautiful. And Veterans Park, and creatively provided over 300 Christmas arrangements for volunteers in service to the elderly, patrons, participated in gardening activities with senior citizens in local nursing homes and to a cancer survivors program. And whereas gardening enables members of garden clubs across the nation and the world to make a difference in their communities where they reside and work, the City of Lakeland recognizes the many significant contributions made by the Garden Club of Lakeland for the betterment of our community. Therefore, William Muttz, City of Lakeland Mayor, and on behalf of the entire Lakeland Commission, do hereby proclaim June 4th through June 10th to be known as National Garden Week. Thank you so much. And could y'all introduce yourselves?
Yes, I'm Marlene Hague. I am the president for the next two years of the Lakeland Garden Club. And I encourage you to join. And I encourage you to join the Garden Club. You can just look us up online for Garden Club of Lakeland and make a lot of friends.
Hi, thank you for the proclamation. My name is Frankie Martin, and I am one of the 135 members of the Garden Club of Lakeland. We're only two, but we'd love for you to come out and join us.
Thank you all so much. And we'll take another picture. Thank you all so much. And now we have, I think, Public Works Week. Is that right? Yeah, National Public Works Week. Here to accept the proclamation is Heath Frederick, Director of Public Works, and his supporting staff members. Y'all are, thank you for your patience. Whereas Public Works, and y'all know how to line up for a picture, so I'm going to start talking. Thank you. Whereas Public Works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, emergency management, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of the City of Lakeland. Do I smell bad? Y'all come up. Somebody's got to get up here and get this piece of paper. So one of y'all are going to have to put this out. Whereas these infrastructure facilities and services could not be provided without the dedication effort, dedicated efforts of Public Works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, solid waste systems, public buildings, other structures and facilities, and lakes essential for our citizens. Whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the City of Lakeland to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of Public Works and Public Works programs in their respective communities. And whereas 2023 marks the 63rd Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association and Canadian Public Works Association. You guys are global. We pay tribute to our Public Works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. Now therefore, H. William Mutt, the Mayor of the City of Lakeland, and on behalf of the entire Lakeland Commission, do hereby proclaim May 21st through 27th, 2023, as National Public Works Week. Thank you all so much for everything you do. This had a really good detail in it. I'm going to let Heath talk about it for just one second.
Austin, thank you for your continued support of the Public Works Department. Get a closer. All right. You know, we really love this city. There's so many professionals in Public Works. There's about, we're almost 300 now, I think. So we do a lot of work out in the city every single day and trying to make this a better place for the city and for us. You know, we all live here too. And just again, thank you for your support.
We appreciate y'all. And I always tell the high school students I work with, the president doesn't really care about our garbage and it getting picked up, but you know, our public sports team does. And so you all keep everything clean and tidy and safe for us, and we really appreciate it. We'll take a picture.
Jeez. Some gargoyles up there.
Three, two, one.
And our last group today is World, it is World Vitiligo Month. Here to accept the proclamation is the Beautifully Unblemished Team and Tony Johnson, Executive Director, Patient Advocate, Founder, and Support Group Leader of Beautifully Unblemished Vitiligo. And they have been so patient. They were here early this morning, so thank you for your patience. We want to celebrate you this morning. Whereas vitiligo is an autoimmune disease causing loss of pigment from areas of the skin and resulting in irregular white spots or patches. And whereas vitiligo affects more than three to five million Americans, and it can affect people of any age, gender, race, or ethnicity. And whereas vitiligo is not contagious and usually not physically painful, the psychological and social effects are well documented and can be especially devastating to children. And whereas in 2022, the FDA approved the first ever drug approved to treat vitiligo. And whereas annually, on a particular day, the United Nations recognizes June 25th as World Vitiligo Day. And whereas an organization locally, Beautifully Unblemished Vitiligo Support Group, Inc., founded in 2018, strives to unite those with vitiligo to help educate, support, advocate, and spread greater public awareness of this condition. Now therefore, H. William Mutt, City of Lakeland Mayor, and on behalf of the entire Lakeland Commission, do proclaim, do now proclaim the whole month of June 2023 is World Vitiligo Awareness Month in the City of Lakeland. And we're so glad y'all are here. Do you want to say it?
Thank you all for this beautiful proclamation. You have been providing us with the proclamation now. I think this is our fourth year that we have been receiving the proclamation. And vitiligo, it's not something that hurts you physically, but it does affect you emotionally and mentally. So we are appreciative of the individuals that are living here in Lakeland and all around the state of Florida that are living with vitiligo.
Good morning. Had to think about it while we, my name is Charlotte Fuller. I've been a part of Tonja since we started. Also, it's not mentioned also that it is autoimmune as well. That's what we're trying to do is get the insurance company to change the labeling to not just say that it's cosmetic, but there is autoimmune that they are studying. So we're trying to educate others to let them know it's just more than just cosmetic. There are some underlying condition, medical conditions that goes with this. But that's why Tonja's traveling around, trying to educate and going to all these places so that she can talk to the other dermatologists to get with the insurance company so they can go further study on our condition.
Thank you all so much.
All right. Three, two, one.
Did anyone from the airbag groups? Okay, no, they didn't. Okay. Thank you all so much. We appreciate everybody waiting through our proclamations. Those are important issues to celebrate and be aware of. And I'm glad we were able to do that here in the City of Lakeland. I know we all appreciate learning more about each of those topics. We will now move into the committee reports and related items. Real Estate and Transportation Committee had a meeting on 6/2, and I'll turn it over to Commissioner Music to read those minutes.
Good morning. Thank you. The Real Estate and Transportation Committee met in the LE Conference Rooms 1A and 1B. Commissioner Mike Music, Chair, and Commissioner Chad McCloud, Member, were present. Commissioner Bill Reed, Member, was absent. Commissioner Sam Simmons was present along with staff. Commissioner Mike Music called the meeting to order at 8:25 a.m. We had one item. It was the first modification of lease agreement with Two Monies LLC. This was a proposed first modification to the ground lease agreement, first modification with Two Monies LLC, which has been operating out of its private hangar at the airport since May of 2018. Two Monies LLC currently leases approximately 0.76 acres of taxi, off of Taxi Lane H at 3907 Arrow Place, located in the north central quadrant of the airport. Two Monies LLC is seeking to modify the renewal terms of its ground lease agreement in order to reduce the 10-year member appraisal institute base rent adjusted cap rate from 12% to 8%, which is consistent with other current ground lease agreements at the airport. This first modification will be applied to Two Monies LLC's first renewal option and shall have a retroactive date of May 1st, 2023, subject to approval by the City Commission. This renewal is the first of three additional 10-year terms contained in the existing lease agreement. Base rent for the first renewal term will be $13,242.24 per year. There's a mis-type here on ours that says month, but it is year. This yearly rent does not include utilities or other applicable taxes which Two Monies LLC will be required to pay in addition to its base rent. Except as otherwise set forth in the first modification, all of the terms and conditions of the existing ground lease agreement shall remain in full force and effect. The committee recommended that the City Commission approve the first modification of the lease with Two Monies LLC and authorize the appropriate city officials to finalize and execute all corresponding documents consistent with the above-specified terms. Deputy City Attorney Ramona Sirianni presented this item to the committee. The action taken was Commissioner Chad McCloud moved for approval recommendation, Commissioner Mike Music second, and the motion carried unanimously. The committee adjourned at 8:28 a.m.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve this?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All, any questions for Commissioner Music? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The minutes are approved for that committee report. Thank you so much, Commissioner Music. We'll now move to the approval of the consent agenda, which includes the commission meeting minutes from May 12th to May 15th, and it also includes Item 6B1 under City Attorney miscellaneous reports.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any questions or comments from the commission? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Public comment for, thank you for that reminder, for consent agenda? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Well, now, we don't have any requests to hear from the general public under Article Number 1. We do have equalization hearings, and so we will cease meeting as a commission and go into our equalization board.
Commissioner, the city charter requires that the City Commission convene as an equalization board prior to imposing a special assessment lien against private property when the city has cut or otherwise cleaned that property and is preparing to impose the cost of that cutting or cleaning against the property. So if you've received a notice to appear this morning relating to the city cleaning or cutting your lot and imposing the costs thereof against your property, this is your opportunity to address the City Commission.
Is there anyone from the public that wants to come on, comment on the equalization listing? Seeing none? Do I have a motion?
No move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comment from the commission? Any further questions or comments from the public? This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. We'll move on to public hearings number three, Item A, second reading ordinances.
A couple of ordinances for second reading and consideration of adoption this morning. These will both require a rule call vote by the City Commission upon consideration. The first is proposed ordinance number 23-023, in order to the City Commission of the City of Lakeland, Florida, relating to the City of Lakeland Employee Pension Plan, admitting Section 23.4.5 of Article 2 of Division 2 of the Charter of the City of Lakeland, Florida, to expand the Deferred Retirement Option Plan Participation Period and amend terminology, providing for codification, providing for separability, repealing our ordinances in conflict herewith, providing an effective date.
Move to approve?
Second. We have a motion and a second. Questions or comments by commission? Commissioner Madden?
Thank you, Mr. Paten. I think this would go to City Manager Schraus, but either one. I had listened to the discussion, you know, leading up to this first reading and then on Friday at the agenda study. And I noticed that City Attorney Palmer, you said that this was not retroactive, although Sean, you had mentioned that at the first reading, there were some folks who had just missed this deadline, who were going out of drop prior to this. And so, you know, to me, if it was that close of a call that there were folks who were hopeful to stay and missed this because of our vote, I just, I wanted to bring that up before we voted. Is there a way to make it retroactive, a certain amount of time for the folks who've been a part of the discussion and a part of this advocacy?
Let me just, if I may, just make a couple maybe clarifying comments. The information that I gave out was based upon that date and moving forward and through the end of the year. And so there were two employees who had just prior to that last discussion had dropped. And I'm unaware of their request, you know, to have some exception that would make it retro to them. So I was really talking more about how many more we're going to be losing from that moment in time until the end of the year. We deal with this, and it's always a difficult decision. And Commissioner, I think you were on the commission when we even had our program that we put in place for our retirees. And we have a subsidy program. And if you'll remember, we had to decide what's going to be the threshold in terms of if they make less than that threshold or above, you know, they would, they would or would not qualify. So there's always those difficulties of deciding, you know, when, when we start the program and should it be retroactive or not. I'm not requesting that it be retroactive. The General Employees Association, who brought this request, you know, to me to move forward, did not request that it be retroactive. And so I, my recommendation is that it would not. I'm not aware of anyone who got missed. Although, as I've stated, there's about 15 to 17 between now and the end of the year.
Other questions? I had a couple of questions. I had talked to Attorney Davis about this after the agenda study in May. And then I had missed the May 15th meeting, and then I wasn't here on Friday. But I know there was a little bit of discussion about this. But with regard to our pay and benefits study, I'm not sure if this information got passed along, but I had requested that maybe it be brought up. I think Attorney Davis may have brought it up to you at one of the agenda studies. But I would really encourage waiting on this vote and tabling it until we have that survey results back, just so we can compare the breadth of the entire, what we provide as the City of Lakeland to our staff. I don't know if anyone else has that interest, but that's something that I was thinking about after our initial first reading of this ordinance, just to make sure that although this is the retirement and it's a drop program that emulates the state, I just want to look at the entire, all of the numbers and everything that we're providing our staff, and especially if we have a market rate that we're looking at that they're researching with the consultant to see how much we're paying. And if we're not paying enough, I want to make sure we can measure all of that collectively. But that was just my opinion that I haven't been able to share with us publicly. And I didn't know if anyone else had an appetite for that. And if not, that's fine. But Commissioner Madden, do you?
So I, when we first started to talk about this, I absolutely was grateful that you brought that up with. And I think a lot of people, we were thinking, we're waiting in the wings for promotion and things like that. So I am glad that we've been able to have the conversation. I know that you did bring it up through City Attorney or through the mayor at one of the meetings. My concern with tabling is just, I hate to have folks who are ready to make this decision and then they're left out because of a delay. That would be my biggest concern. Although, you know, I'm hopeful that with what we've heard from the city manager and because this came from the whole group of employees as a recommendation, I'm hopeful that that means that the employees really do want this as a benefit. You know, going through the last year of, you know, trying to get new hirees, the time to me is kind of unique, that it's just difficult to get folks hired in whatever job, you know, that you have. So I feel like if it wasn't as much of a concern, like it was not as difficult to get folks hired right now and fill some of those positions, then I would be absolutely, you know, open to wanting to table and to just make sure this is a more, you know, comprehensive approach to employment. I'm just worried because I've heard from different departments that, you know, if we lose some of these that are on the cusp of, you know, not being able to stay in because of our delay, that then we just have more vacancies to fill. So that's kind of what I've been doing in my own contemplations with regard to this decision. So I am in favor of voting today, you know, for those employees who do want to make use of it, being able to keep that legacy knowledge in our organization. But I'm hopeful that when we get the information back, that we'll also be able to, you know, look for, making sure that the folks who are waiting in the wings or who are looking for promotions get that opportunity as well.
Mayor Paten, that would be my, that would be my assessment as well as, because this went through their group and they voted for it, and there was such a large turnout of supporting the vote, that that would be the direction that I would.
Any other comments? Commissioner Reed?
Thank you. There again, I concur. And again, at this juncture, I'm not willing to amend my motion.
I was just curious, can you remind us, Sean, when the pay and benefits study is scheduled to be done? And?
We're actually supposed to be receiving a first draft of that this week. You know, the one thing that I have commented on previously, however, is that, and this is really more for the public comment, is that, as we've indicated before, you know, the drop program is actually a savings to the city. It is, it is not an expense. We save, I think Mike's most recent calculation, and Mike can chime in, is, is over about $2 million a year, you know, through the, through the program. So I don't think that we are going to find our, I'm pretty certain we're not going to find ourselves in a position where we make decisions upon changes in pay. we make decisions upon changes in pay related to the drop program. They're, they're really not, there's, there's not a correlation between the two of them. So I, I don't expect that, that there will be any need or issue related to the class and compensation study that relates back to drop.
Anyone else? Yes, Commissioner McLeod.
And I know Commissioner Music, you mentioned on Friday having Mike just kind of walk through drop, and you don't have to give the whole presentation, but any comments on the financial savings? I think that would be a good time to mention that.
In addition to that, the pension liability piece too. That comes from the retirement fund that we use to pay for.
There's, once someone enters drop, both the city and the employees stop paying into the pension plan, okay, whether in plan A, plan B, plan C, or they're in the police plan, okay? The actuary does not recognize that there's any real cost associated with this at all. So as far as pension liability goes, that's the minimus at best. We are saving by not contributing into the plan. Right now, we've got, the last time I had talked to you about this in the public, we were at about one hundred and thirty-five folks in drop. At that point, we were over $2 million a year in savings, okay? Talking to Sheri this morning, we're up to one hundred and sixty-eight, I believe, people in drop right now. So it's actually higher than that. And that's real savings to all the departments that have people that are in, that are in drop. So we've recognized that not only from a cash flow standpoint for all the funds, but the pension plan itself, most everyone are accepting the three percent guaranteed return. Well, the plan is, is making it minimum on average required 6.75%. So everything above that, the plan keeps that amount. I went back and looked, Jeff Sterns actually, and I went back and looked, and as far back as we could go, started, I think, in two thousand and three, talking to the actuary, the plan has never, the city, the citizens, no one has ever had to subsidize drop in any way. So it's been a savings to the pension plan and a savings to the city as a whole. So if that answers your, your question, sir.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other? Commissioner Simmons?
Just for clarity, and I've been trying to get my head around it, but once the once the contributions from the city and the employees ceases, at that point, the payout, the bi-weekly payouts occur, and they go into an investment account, at which point the three percent you were mentioning is the guaranteed amount.
Right, and so what happens, I, I went into, myself, I went into drop a year and a half ago, and so what happened was instead of me collecting a pension check as though I had left the city twice a month, it goes right into an investment account as a part of the pension funds of the city, okay? So it's all invested together by the pension board, and, and Sheri's team manages all of that, and so all of those are co-mingled. I am then getting a guaranteed three percent return on that money going forward if that, you know, if that's what employee chooses, so. So that's, I don't know if that helps you, sir?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Commissioner Music?
So where is the reasoning behind three years, six years, eight years? I mean, why, why have a year on it? Why, what, what's the reason that we don't look at it and say, you know what, it's, it's just anytime you want to, because you don't get to go back, right? I mean, once you declare drop, you, you're in drop.
Correct.
I mean, if, if we're looking at it and there's not a negative, in fact, we might be able to find a positive even, why?
Well, and so I will, a, a lot of the drop programs are just patterned as examples from one to another. When FRS implemented it, many of your other, you know, cities that are not, like Lakeland, were not part of FRS, but I know there was a lot of people who looked at FRS and put the same parameters, and so that's where the different, you know, years or terms came from. But there are some, and, and including, there's, there's legislation right now that passed both the House and Senate unanimously, and there would be certain classifications within the FRS system that will have an unlimited term. There are some, I, I mentioned when we last spoke about this, even one of our neighboring cities, the city of Auburndale, their general employees do not have a term. It is unlimited as to the number of years that they can, that they can be in the, the drop.
Is there, do we see a, a reason that we wouldn't want to head that direction if so? I mean, is, do they have adverse actions because of that? I mean?
I will tell you that what we know is the actuary is comfortable with eight years. I don't know that right now there's a, a reason to do anything other than eight years. If in fact down the road, it's, it's becoming more of a trend, and we find that this would help us continue to retain folks, maybe that's something we talk about. But again, it's all starts with the actuary running the calculations to determine whether or not this is going to cost the plan or the city money. That's where we started. Had this shown that it was going to cost us money, we would have had to take a different look at it, but it is a tremendous savings right now. So I, I don't know that I would necessarily say let's go farther, because we don't have that information. I think eight years is, is solid, and to Sean's point, FRS is looking at actually expanding in other areas too.
And Commissioner Music, you know, so the reason why when we had the actuary take a look, we, we drew the line at eight years is because, again, that was consistent with what the general employees were asking for, and I, I think that where that came from is because they, they saw the, the police department, you know, the, the FOP and the people in that pension plan get that. They're seeing the discussions and the changes that were already made in the FRS system. They're seeing some of the other cities that are making changes, and, and eight years is, is not, that is not every one. We've seen some that have gone to seven, but the majority of the ones, I would say, that have changed theirs recently have, have gone to eight. I just came back from the Florida City County Managers Association Conference in Orlando. This is a big topic that was discussed there. A lot of the city managers are, are talking about this because, again, like we've experienced here, a lot of their employees are coming forward and saying, hey, this is happening, you know, in, in other programs. We would like to kind of be leveled up from a competitive standpoint and, and have similar considerations.
One last question for me. Are there minutes from like the general employees? There, any type of meetings and leadership that they have that we can review? Are those online?
There are minutes.
Okay.
They are not online, but we do have minutes from, from those meetings. And, and I would just add in as a reminder that, and, and we had in our previous conversation, when this first came to me from the General Employees Association Board, it was coming from the board, and they were ready, at the same time that the police officers came forward, to, to make this request. I asked them to, to hold off, and it was because I, I wanted to be certain that I wasn't just getting a reflection of the board. I wanted to make sure that all of the employees had an opportunity to, to vote on this and say whether they, they preferred this or not. So we made that voting opportunity available to every employee. There was a, an option to do it online. There was a, a paper option, and that's where we got back the, and I will tell you, I, I would have, I would have bet, I was guessing, that it would be lower than the seventy-two percent response rate that we got, almost seventy-three percent of, of those voting, wanting it. But those, the, the minutes are available. We have those.
If you could forward those, that'd be great. I would just sort of like to see it. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? From the commission, any from the public? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Commissioner McLeod?
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
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 Unanimously passes. Thank you.
Proposed ordinance, proposed ordinance number twenty-three dash oh-two-four, an ordinance relating to public right-of-way, making findings, vacating public right-of-way located north of West Peachtree Street, south of West Magnolia Street, east of North Virginia Avenue, and west of North New York Avenue within the city of Lakeland, Florida, authorizing the recording of a certified copy of this ordinance, provided for severability, provided an effective date.
For approval?
Motion to approve. Is there a second and a second from Commissioner McLeod? Any discussion from commission? Seeing none, any from the public? This too is a roll call vote. Commissioner Simmons?
Aye.
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 Yes.
Aye.
Unanimously carries. Thank you. B, resolutions.
Several resolutions for consideration of adoption this morning. The first is proposed resolution number twenty-three dash oh-two-five, a resolution relating to assessments determining the necessity for having clean and cleared certain properties within the city of Lakeland, providing for the assessment of liens against such property for expenses incurred in the cleaning and clearing thereof, providing an effective date.
There a motion to approve?
For approval?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion with commission? From commission? Any from the audience? Seeing none, this too is a roll call vote. Commissioner McLeod?
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Number two.
Two is proposed resolution number twenty-three dash oh-two-six, a resolution authorizing approval of agreements between the Florida Department of Transportation and the city of Lakeland for funding the removal and relocation of city water and electric facilities located in state, state right-of-way due to the construction of the interchange modification of I four and State Road thirty-three, making findings, providing an effective date.
Motion to approve?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion from commission? Yes, Commissioner Madden?
Thank you. Well, this one has a, a pretty big price tag, so I feel like we need to at least have a presentation. We can have a presentation on this one?
We can. I, I don't know if we have anybody from electric or water. Tori, I know there's some like, okay.
It looked like from the agenda study that FDOT is kind of the construction partner, and we're just paying the bills as they give them to us.
Right, and, and you can contrast this with what we usually do with subordination agreements. With subordination agreements, where facilities aren't in easement, so FDOT has to pay for the relocation here. We're in state right-of-way, so the, the cost to relocate is on us, but Robbie and I know Tori is also.
I'll add a little, little bit to that. So when they do a road project, we're forced to move. They, I think it's in state statutes that tells us to move. We have several ways to accomplish that. We can design in-house, design with their consultant. We can construct with our own forces, go hire our own contractor, or partner with them. In this case, we've opted to partner with them. This value comes from what they call statewide averages. DOT does these type of projects all the time, and they track every single contract, put it into this big database, and when we make the submittal to them, we have to use the statewide averages. When DOT puts this project out for construction, they'll put it out for their road construction, but also all of our utilities. And in this particular case, we hired a local consultant, Chastain Skilman, to design all of this for, so we designed it, I guess, under our own control. They prepared all the plans to DOT specifications with our input of where we wanted our utilities, and so that gets put with DOT's roadway plans, and it goes out to bid. So contractors will bid on that. They'll come back and tell us the price. So the price that's in there right now is just an estimate.
It sounded like both electric and water were working in tandem to make sure everything, all of it is moved appropriately. Is this, does this fall under our dig ones policy with broadband and things like that? Like, are we looking at everything when we're spending this much money to move and vacate, that we're covering all of our bases with regard to infrastructure?
No, it, it's not the dig one. Probably the reason it kind of moved in tandem. I used to be out at the power plant, so I was, the power plant doesn't normally deal with DOT projects, and so I kind of helped facilitate with their staff this whole project with DOT, and getting the gas line moved while also getting our water utility lines moved. The power plant is using AECOM for their design, and water utilities is using Chastain Skilman.
I don't know if there's any other conduit or anything there. It's just mainly the natural gas pipeline and the water?
It's all coordinated through DOT, so they look at the entire design. So every single utility submits a set of plans to DOT to figure out where everybody's going to go, so it is a coordinated effort.
But no update on any kind of broadband conduit or dig ones? There's nothing there. And then when we move it, so we're, we're vacating it, but we're, we have to move that, right, with the water?
DOT doesn't like you to leave your old utilities in, and so the gas line is being relocated, and they're doing a partnership with Florida Gas to, to hand that gas line over to them. What's left is a gas line that's out of service. DOT wants that removed. Likewise, on the water utilities, they don't want our old lines left in the ground, so we'll put the new lines in, we'll put, place them into service, and then that contractor will come back. The, the biggest benefit for going with DOT for the construction is the timing. We're never in their way because they're in complete control of it. If we were to hire our own contractor, we either have to get in there first and do this ahead of time, and sometimes we opt to do that if time allows, and when it doesn't, this is a way to let them, while they're tearing it up, instead of us going in there, tearing it up, restoring it, making sure everything's back, then later on letting DOT come back. It kind of saves some restoration cost in that we just give it all to the DOT contractor. He builds it all, he tears up, he's in complete control. They can never point a finger at us. Sometimes we wait for their maintenance of traffic. We wait for certain, certain pieces of construction. So there are some parts that are done in conjunction. In this case, we won't be in charge. We're overseeing all of it. We'll be out there inspecting it, but we're not in charge of construction.
Okay, and it, and on this one, or is this the only, I feel like we had a bigger conversation on the water, like this is a, is there another one coming that this is the six million portion? This is just for the move at the thirty-three interchange, but we're going to get to the other projects, right, on water?
Two trunks coming up.
Yes, okay, so.
This is for DOT typically calls it dash three and dash four. One of them is at the thirty-three I four intersection, and the other piece of it runs the rest of thirty-three down to, to Old Gombe.
Commissioner Reed?
Thank you. What is the, what's that $2.6 million figure? What was that initial estimate in there? I thought in the budget somewhere.
Further down.
My notes from Friday. The one that we're going to use the ARPA funds and then be able to.
Slidere.
That's coming down.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Any other questions?
And just a comment for the public, I'm glad Commissioner Madden brought this up. This is something we've been working on for, since I was elected to commission, is working with the I four thirty-three interchange, and now making sure that that can be widened, and the gas line was the big kind of holdup of all this to expand and have the flow of traffic out there. So all of the growth that's coming from Polk City down through thirty-three, and then on our side of I four as well, this is a very expensive, but something that needed to be mitigated as we continue to grow in that area. And so it's something that has been, I know the TPO has looked at that interchange, the I four thirty-three, just for a reminder, I four and State Road thirty-three is the last interchange on Interstate four that has been upgraded or touched since it was built. So this is a really imperative piece of the entire network throughout the state of Florida, and, and unfortunately, it falls on us to kind of pay for this and get it going, but thank you all for that. Yes.
Potem, if I may, last week, I also worked with staff to ask the question about, you know, some of the infrastructure funding coming out of the governor's office, and whether or not, you know, this expense might be potentially reimbursable. And so contacts have been made. We, we did, we, we did not get a conclusive answer as of last week. I'm not sure if there's been any updates yet today, but we, we are at least asking that question.
Mr. Shep's in the audience shaking his head no.
Thank you for asking that question.
Thank you. Any other comments from commission? Any from the public? Oh, Commissioner Simmons?
If you would, what is the specific improvement, what is the specific improvement that's being done in this project?
For the gas line, it's straight removal.
I mean, aside from the removal of vacating, the, the project itself that DOT is doing, what are they doing?
They're widening the roads, putting in stormwater ponds, putting in stormwater pipes. And so when those conflict with our utilities, we have to move. Usually, we just go up, down, around. In this particular case, the ponds were pretty impactful to the right-of-way and reduced the amount of cover over top of all of the utilities. And so we want more cover than that. We also don't want our lines down in the bottom of ponds. It makes it hard to maintain in a storm season.
Yeah, I understand the fact that we're moving our utilities.
Yep.
But what about the, the road itself? What, what is the length? What is, what are the dimensions that DOT is doing?
I know that they're going to four lane. They're putting a roundabout on each side of I four. So it's, it's going from two lane to four lane.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
And just a, a side note, our wastewater line is twelve inch. Planning for future growth, we are upsizing it to twenty-four inch. So that's not a piece that's really recognized anywhere for you guys to see, but, you know, anytime we move, we look at upsizing as well.
That's pertinent information. Thank you for sharing that.
Yep.
All right. Any other discussion or comments? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Commissioner Simmons?
Aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Number three.
Next is proposed resolution number twenty-three dash oh-two-seven, a resolution of the city commission of the city of Lakeland, Florida relating commission of the city of Lakeland, Florida relating to transportation, approving and authorizing execution of an amendment to the Traffic Safety Maintenance and Compensation Agreement with the Florida Department of Transportation, designating the Public Works Director to execute annual amendments, adopting findings, providing an effective date.
A motion to approve?
For approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments from commission? Any from the audience? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Commissioner McLeod.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Number four.
Is proposed resolution number twenty-three dash oh-two-eight, a resolution relating to public utility easements, making findings, vacating existing public utility easements located within the villages of, at Bridgewater Village fourteen, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
For approval?
Second.
A motion for approval and a second. Questions from commission or clarification? Is this tied to the same DOT, what we just discussed? It's entirely different?
Yeah, it's just they're, they're plating the property in there, providing different easements for our facility, so we no longer need these easements.
Other questions from commissioners?
It is confusing because it does show the picture with the twenty-four-inch, you know, pipe, so I conflated them.
Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, this is also a roll call vote. Commissioner Simmons?
Aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Number five.
Next is proposed resolution number twenty-three dash oh-two-nine, a resolution authorizing execution of a grant agreement with the Florida Department of Transportation to add funding for the security enhancements and upgrades project at Lakeland-Lunder International Airport, adopting findings, providing an effective date.
A motion to approve?
Second.
All right, McLeod, and then Music.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions from commission? Any from the audience? Seeing none, roll call vote. Commissioner McLeod.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Item number six.
And this item requires a public hearing, but no action this morning because it actually will have to undergo two public hearings, so this will come back on June nineteenth. But you do need to open this up for public comment this morning. That is proposed resolution number twenty-three dash oh-three-oh, a resolution of the city commission of the city of Lakeland, Florida, designating property located at twenty-thirty through twenty-thirty-five Griffin Road as a brownfield area, authorizing the city attorney to notify the Florida Department of Environmental Protection of said designation, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
So we'll now open up for public questions, or do we do commission questions first?
One. Both.
Both at the same time. Are there any questions with respect to proposed twenty-three dash zero thirty ordinance, designating property located at twenty-thirty to twenty-thirty-five Griffin Road as a brownfield area?
Uh, I'm sorry.
Yes, Commissioner Simmons.
Yes, uh, I think we went over this in our agenda study, didn't we? Yeah. I'd still like to see exactly where that's located. Do we have a map or anything?
That is being shown on the screen there.
Okay. Griffin Road.
That is east of US ninety-eight north, and just south of Griffin Road.
Is this the interstate right here at the bottom corner? Is that, is that I-4 coming right here?
Kathleen is coming from the west, so it looks like it would be I-4.
Alex Landback's going to.
Alex Landback from the city attorney's office. This is, you have Kathleen Road on the west, and then you have I-4 on the east, and so this is kind of in between there.
How large is that property?
Well, we actually have a representative here from the applicant, and so if you don't mind, can introduce him here. Good morning. My name is Brett Brumman with the Goldstein Environmental Law Firm. We have offices at twenty-one hundred Ponce Steel and Boulevard in Coral Gables, and I represent, or we represent the applicant, Blue Griffin Terrace LLC. Commissioner, I do not have the, Commissioner Simmons, I do not have the exact property size immediately on hand.
The legal description says about eleven-point-seven acres.
Yes, eleven-point-seven acres. Eleven-point-seven-two-seven acres. And to add, this would be the second phase of the Swan Lake Village development that pretty much surrounds the property.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Just to follow up on what the project purpose is?
Certainly, certainly. So the applicant is making this request. They made a similar request for the first phase of the project roughly two years ago, due to a perception of environmental contamination coming from the property's historical uses of citrus grove. At the first phase, it's a relatively limited amount of area, no contamination was found. However, at this phase, a very, very small amount, a small area of contamination located on the northeast corner, did have levels of arsenic in soil, slightly above soil cleanup target levels for residential use. The developer was able to address that during the redevelopment process. So by entering into this program, the developer's able to recuperate some of those costs at no cost to the city through a state incentive program. In this case, the primary incentive available would be a reimbursement of sales taxes paid on construction materials of the project, and that money could then go back to cover those costs of actually addressing the contamination, as well as allow that money to be reinvested back into the project.
Questions or comments? Any from the audience? All right, thank you. We'll close the public hearing.
And no, no actions required this morning. That will, this will come back for a second public hearing on June nineteenth, and consideration of adoption at that time.
We have no report from the community redevelopment agency or the city manager, or do you have a verbal?
If I may be recognized for a verbal.
Sure.
Mayor Pro Tem, thank you. I mentioned earlier that last Friday, our deputy city manager, Emily Cologne, and I were not at agenda study because we were at our state association conference over in Orlando, and on Friday, I was honored to be the host of our annual awards program and luncheon. And I was equally as honored to nominate this year our deputy city manager, Emily Cologne, for a Rising Star Award, and our board of directors and our awards and scholarship committee unanimously awarded this award to Emily Cologne. And the award recognizes local government leaders in Florida with less than ten years of local government experience for their personal and professional excellence. And I will tell you, Emily just barely got under the ten-year limit. She's getting quite a bit of experience and tenure under her belt, but this is, she was one of two throughout the state to receive it this year. I'm incredibly proud of Emily and the work that she does, not just here at the city of Lakeland, but in our professional association, as a professor over at USF, as an adjunct professor. She's involved in many different boards and other efforts toward the advancement of good, sound local government. And so Emily is in the room, and I just want to recognize and congratulate Emily, and you see a photo of that presentation.
She's hiding. We can't, can you slide up?
Two of us can see her.
She texted me and said she was in the room. I think she's around the corner.
Hi, congratulations. We're very proud of you. Thank you so much, and thank you, Sean, for sharing that. We appreciate that, and all of our wonderful leadership team here at the city of Lakeland. All right, city attorney Davis.
Our two ordinances for first reading this morning, these will be read by title only, and we'll come back for a public hearing and consideration of adoption on June nineteenth. The first is proposed ordinance number twenty-three dash oh-two-five, an ordinance relating to zoning, making findings, approving a conditional use to allow for the replacement of mobile homes within an existing non-conforming mobile home park on property located at four-oh-five Union Drive, finding conformity with the comprehensive plan, providing for severability, providing an effective date. Next is proposed ordinance number twenty-three dash oh-two-six, an ordinance relating to zoning, making findings, amending ordinance forty-three fifty-eight to modify an existing conditional use to allow preschool with a maximum enrollment of sixty-seven students as an accessory use to an existing church on property located at four-eleven West Robson Street, finding conformity with the comprehensive plan, providing for severability, providing an effective date. Again, these will come back for a public hearing and consideration for adoption on June nineteenth. I don't know, Andrew, if we're going to, or will we be in this location at that time, or is that still to be determined?
We're hopefully expected to be back at city hall at that time, but thank you.
All right, we can go to item B two miscellaneous reports.
Okay, the first is the Western Trunk Project that we were briefly alluding to earlier. Alex Landback of our office will summarize that for you.
Morning, this is Alex Landback for the city attorney's office. Attached for your consideration is an engineering and design services contract with Garnet Companies, Inc., for the planned replacement of the existing thirty-six-inch western gravity sewer trunk line. This is the, the Western trunk is approximately twelve thousand eight hundred linear feet with forty-three manholes and forty-seven branches that flow along the sewer line's route. The existing route is responsible for an average flow of about three-point-five million gallons per day through a gravity sewer line that terminates at the city's southwest pump station. The original reinforced gravity pipe sewer and manholes were relined in the late nineteen-eighties, which reduced the inside diameter of the sewer lines from thirty-six inches to thirty. The Western trunk has since reached its capacity, which significantly limits the development along the light, the route itself. The line has also started to show numerous maintenance concerns, which further justify the replacement of this infrastructure asset in lieu of short-term localized repairs. This project utilizes a progressive design delivery process in which the city progresses from a preliminary route evaluation, engineering design, to construction in three phases. The intent is to structure the three phases to provide the city with a more accurate construction scope and cost that would occur in phase three. Meanwhile, Garnet would be able to perform some of the functions that are, you know, encompassed in phase one and two. On November seventh, twenty-twenty-two, the city approved phase one services with Garnet, and subsequently completed branch verification surveys of existing manholes and a route study. The scope of the phase two services are summarized in the table contained in the memo, and Garnet will be compensated accordingly as part of that fee, that fixed fee arrangement. Now, although this contract is limited to phase two services, one of Garnet's primary tasks will be the development of guaranteed maximum price for phase three construction. However, this contract provides that the, with the city with an off-ramp, so that at the completion of phase two, the city is not obligated to accept the GMP with Garnet and can proceed, you know, with another contractor or figure out another alternative. If the GMP and the additional terms are applicable to phase three are acceptable to both parties, a proposed amendment to this contract will be presented to the city commission at that time. All services pursuant to this contract will be performed in accordance with the terms and conditions set forth in the contract attached to the agenda. The total not-to-exceed cost associated with phase two is one million, five-hundred-ninety-two thousand, eight-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars. This project has been approved and budgeted in the Water Utilities FY twenty-three budget, and is also partially funded by the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, which will provide seventeen-point-eight million dollars towards the entire project. That would be phases one, two, and three. All work associated with phase two will be completed on or before March twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four. The city intends to complete the entire Western Trunk replacement no later than December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six. It is recommended the city commission approve and authorize the appropriate city officials to attach the, execute the attached agreement with Garnet Companies for the phase two design services. And I believe we have Robbie Canis in the audience as well to answer any specific questions on a more technical basis.
There a motion to approve?
For approval?
Yes. Second by Commissioner Reed. Questions or comments from commission? Commissioner Reed.
Thank you. We have discussed this previously, and there's areas in red, the easements. Is that the final route we had picked? I know there was some discussion on different routes, and is that easement not an issue anymore?
We haven't obtained any easements yet. The route study, what it did was it picked the route. It allowed them to put an engineering estimate together, which is what we're here today for, and those are the proposed easements that their team will go out and try and obtain.
Commissioner Reed, that's also included in the phase two process as part of one of the tasks.
Other questions? How long are the estimates good for? Like, if there's some kind of, if we prolong at some point, just whenever, is there like a finite amount of time, I guess is my question? I think from engineering roads, sometimes we have a finite amount of time in the planning and development of it. Is that the same for you guys too, or no? That estimate holds for a long period of time?
Chester, man, are you talking about?
Just the, in general, the estimate of the project cost.
I'd say it's good whenever they give us the real price. I mean.
Yeah.
You know, I don't know how long it's good for. Right now, so a couple of things came out of the route study, and number one was, was several routes. We would use that in case we had to go to eminent domain. We want to avoid that because we really want to get this thing constructed rather quickly. The engineering cost came out of it. Our first real look at the construction cost, the first time that Garnet has looked from front to back, top to bottom, what the expected cost might be. When we did the selection, we put a bunch of units in there. We asked for unit pricing, and we talked about this, I think, at the November meeting. The initial indication was about thirty million, but that didn't include everything. We didn't do the enough engineering. We just needed to get enough of the puzzle to be able to select somebody. At this point, coming out of that route study, right now, they're guessing at about fifty million dollars, not guessing. They've estimated it fifty, and I hope that they'll do some value engineering to try and bring that down.
I think my question probably, I didn't word it correctly, was more about this study. How long is this study good for? Whenever we pay to do these studies and engineering studies, do those ever change?
Yeah, I mean, again, I think they're good for the moment that they're done in, and.
We don't have a running clock on it, I guess.
No.
That's my question. Thank you. That's what I was trying to get to. Sorry, I was not helping you at all, Robbie. Thanks for your patience. Other questions? Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, this is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, I think we are now moving into utility, section eight, B one.
So that's a resolution relating to the fuel charge, proposed resolution number twenty-three dash oh-three-one, a resolution relating to the electric utility, making findings establishing the fuel charge for all customer classes for meters red on or after July first, twenty-twenty-three, amending time of day fuel charge for applicable rate classes, repealing resolution fifty-eight oh-two, providing an effective date.
Is there a motion for approval?
Motion to approve?
Second.
So we have a motion from McLeod and a second from Music. Any questions from commission? Yes, Commissioner McLeod.
Mayor Pro Tem, Tori, I was just going to ask if you would give a high-level overview. I know we talked about this on Friday, but we had some commissioners who weren't here.
Good afternoon, or good morning.
Morning still, yes.
Good morning.
Yes, I'm sorry you got to miss my presentation, but basically what is happening is we've got the resolution. There are some things that are impacting the fuel budget, the road widening on State Road thirty-three, and we're also going to be tying in the pipeline in October, from the nineteenth to November second. That's, you know, when you're seeing where the pipeline is being removed, that is when we'll have our work completed by November second. So these are additional costs that are going to be part of the fuel budget, because back in November of twenty-two, I came to you to ask if we could fund for it. And the, what the resolution is doing, that three-point-five part for Lakeland Electric will be part of the fuel budget, okay? But what they're doing right now is they're asking for, you know, a commitment with the resolution. We won't actually have to incur these costs until once the project's on way and they've done the bid, so we're estimating about January of two thousand twenty-four. That's the time I'd have to pay for the, the actual cost of remove the pipeline, to put it into an escrow account. So the reason I had asked to have the fuel rate stay at fifty-five dollars is because we still need to continue to over-recover to build up our reserves, so when that comes, that escrow amount comes available for payment in January, we'll have the funds, so that we can keep our fuel rates more evenly. And I had also did comparisons with our rates to show that even though we've had these additional costs with, you know, the removal of the pipe, plus for the next five years, I'm going to have to also pay an extra twenty-five cent on our capacity to pay for the project, okay? So that's another four-point-five million that we'll be spending, but it's annually, about three-hundred-and-eighty a month. And the committee had asked us if we could show that cost when I do my presentations, when I come, so that was one of the takes from there. But our rates right now, as far as competitive, we are, you know, very low as far as most of the other muni right now. I think it's JEA's a hundred-and-eighteen or a hundred-and-nineteen megawatt roughly for our rates. And as you recall, last year, all the munis raised their rates when the price of fuel went crazy with, we had strikes with the railroads. We had Fremont Point, you know. We had Fremont Point, you know, with the LNG facilities had a explosion, and then, of course, the war with Ukraine and Russia. We had a lot of rates, rates go up at that time. So the IRUs are now, you know, raising their rates to recap from, you know, not recovering much last year. So you, what you're seeing now is all the munis in the state, rates are lower. But we're sitting with very affordable rates, and I'm hoping, you know, if the rates do stay, price of gas stays low this summer, that maybe in October, when I come to you, I might be able to reduce the fuel rate a little bit. But for right now, to be conservative, I know I've got costs coming on, and I would like to just keep it at 55. Is that a pretty good summary?
Thank you. Any other questions? Any comments or questions from the audience? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Commissioner Simmons?
Aye.
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 Thanks, Tori. Thanks, Commissioner McLeod, for bringing that up. I appreciate it. All right.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Ramona Sariani for the City Attorney's Office. I have the rest of the items under the utility portion of the agenda. That first item is Amendment Number One and Change Order with Sargent &amp; Lundie LLC. This is for services, engineering services related to the Rice project. They are our consulting engineer on the project. If you recall, the Commissioner, the Commission initially approved an agreement with Sargent &amp; Lundie as the consulting engineer on this particular project back in October of 2020. That was a three-year agreement with an initial estimated cost of work, which was just under $5 million. Since that time, back then in December of 2021, there was an additional change order that was approved in the amount of one, just over $1.5 million, which increased the total cost of the engineering services for the project to $6.5 million. What we are asking for today, and as you heard, we had a representative here on Friday from Sargent &amp; Lundie, with regard to some of the reasoning behind what these cost increases entail, and because you've heard also a presentation by David Holdner on the overall Rice project and some of the delays that we're looking at, the, the request here is to extend the existing consulting engineering agreement with Sargent &amp; Lundie from May 31st, 2023 to now May 31st, 2025, or upon completion of the commissioning of the peaking power capacity, whichever occurs first. In addition, we are asking, staff is asking, for a change order, an approval amount of And again, the increase in, in the amount is due to some issues that you heard discussed on Friday that include the vendor design input and procurement, and there are some multiple scope changes that the project has gone through that resulted in additional engineering costs that were not originally included in that budget, as well as significant delays that were attributed to availability of personnel and the supply chain disruption due to COVID, and as well as the ongoing war in the Ukraine. While the majority of the engineering work has been completed for the project, the additional cost will also cover a modest, modified scope of work that includes onsite construction support, as well as design clarifications that the city has requested. So between the initial estimated costs, in addition to the additional funds being requested here, the total estimated project cost for engineering services with Sargent &amp; Lundie for the Rice project totaled $8,380,919. So the requested change order, again, is a request for additional extension of the contract term, as well as a $1,877,000 increase. That updated total estimated cost of the work is included in Lakeland Electric's Rice Project budget, which has been funded through the city's energy system revenue bond. This did receive unanimous favorable approval from the Utility Committee on Friday as well, and we would ask for your approval.
Motion to approve.
A motion. Do we have a second?
Okay.
We have a second from Commissioner McLeod. Any questions for Ramona or LE staff? Yes, Commissioner Music?
And I don't, I don't really have a question. I think it was covered pretty well by both parties at the Utility Committee meeting. But I had a gentleman reach out to me after church and, you know, had read some stuff online, so we kind of talked back and forth. And, and then we, you know, we all received an email, and you know, I, so I had done some, some research. I mean, nobody wants to pay more. I mean, it's, it's really, but, but nobody can also deny that there's a reason why we're paying more. It's not, it's not a short-sightedness on, on our part as elected officials or as our team for missing something. I did a, I did a quick search as we were talking, you know, your Big Mac is up 22% since, since COVID, right? And, and we're, you know, we're going and paying that, and, and, so I just, just more, just as a, maybe me venting a little bit because I had someone vent to me, but it's just, you know, we have to get this done. You know, we're, we're purchasing power. We, we need to get this done. It's, it's a, it's a pain. You know, with gas prices, we certainly, you know, could opt to lower prices, but we, we've got to hold to be able to get this up and done, so that we can be more in control than we are now. And it's, it's unfortunate, but, you know, it is what it is. So I'm certainly not in favor of the increases, but I'm in favor of voting to move forward and get it done.
Other comments or questions from the Commission? Any from the audience? This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The second item that we have is a change order, number two, with electric design engineering. This is for annual electrical construction services for the McIntosh-Larson and Winston Power Plants. This was originally approved by the Commission back in February of 2022. We had three contractors that were approved for the annual electrical construction services, and as well as, if you recall, back in October of 2022, there was a change order, number one, to this particular contract, which included $750,000 additional dollars being allocated, partially because not only the demolition of Unit Three, but Units One and Two were also included in that scope of work, which was the reason for that initial increase in the change order. And as we've been, staff has been working through, through the, through the process, and repowering, city staff has identified additional services that would increase EDE's scope of work at the project site. And so this change order, number two, seeks to add additional scope of work. We already have the staff and resources from EDE at the plant, and so they are looking to do some work, some additional work with separation and isolation of Unit Three medium and low voltage power distribution systems as we continue working through the, the remains of the demolition of Unit Three, as well as isolating Unit Three's coal yard power systems for continued operation of dewatering in the sump pumps. It will also be providing McIntosh, power to McIntosh temporary administration offices, as well as temporary power for the Rice Project construction office trailers, and office trailers and other Rice Projects support as needed during the project, as well as providing power distribution for the McIntosh parking lot lights, assisting with installation of a new circuit breaker for MGT2, upgrading Unit Eight's steam turbine distribution system, providing Unit Five temporary power distribution as well. So there is a significant increase in the scope of work. The total amount being requested under the change order is $500,000. That is included in Lakeland Electric's FY23 budget, and this did receive unanimous favorable approval by the Utility Committee on Friday's agenda study.
A motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Yes, Commissioner Reed?
Is, is, what's the total price of this project? Is it 1.7 or 2.5?
Originally, the initial scope of work was 1.25, and then the additional work that was approved, because we included those other two, that was just for informational purposes. So that was in addition to, so 750 on top of 1.25. And now the change order is requesting an additional $500,000 for increasing the scope of work.
Other questions or comments? Any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, this is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Third item that we have is an agreement with Valmont Industries for the purchase of a steel line H-frame terminal structure for the Drainfield Substation on, located on Old Madula Road. These structures are going to be added to the Drainfield Substation to allow high-voltage transmission lines to make a connection to Lakeland Electric's newest substation, which is the Hamilton Substation located on Drainfield Road. The main structure is an H-frame that's approximately 60 feet high, and there's also some additional structures, including anchor supports and a stand for this particular structure. The city's purchasing department went out for a bid in April of 2023. The city did not receive any bids with regard to its initial response, and so the city's purchasing department then reached out specifically to vendors known to do this type of work, and then did get three responses back. Grid Structures LLC was actually the low bidder, but upon evaluation by staff, once their bid was evaluated, they noticed a number of calculation errors in, in the engineering specifications. They did come back, Grid Structures, and with the revised bid of $68,300. However, in evaluating that further, there were still calculating errors involved in the engineering constructions, which clearly wasn't, wasn't acceptable to staff. So in looking at the other bid responses, Valmont Industries was deemed the most responsive, responsible bidder at an initial bid price of $84,193.49, and that bid is actually $44.76 lower, not much, but a little lower, due to minor adjustments in the steel pricing during, during the bid process. They will be delivering, upon approval by the City Commission, they'll be delivering the structures in March of 2024. The total cost of the structures are, is $84,148.73. That is, will be funded through Lakeland Electric's Energy System Revenue Bond budget, and this also received unanimous favorable approval by the Utility Committee on Friday.
A motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion from Commission?
Just got one question. How many structures are there?
There's the one large 60-foot H steel structure, and then it's all the supporting, I believe, I think we have staff here to answer. But it's also, I think, the, the other structures related to that, but that's the, there's one main structure, and then the other supports.
Yeah, it's just additional mounting structures for instrument transformers and such. The main structure is the transmission line coming in, the H-frame.
All right, thank you.
Other questions from Commission or comments? Any from the public? Seeing none, this too is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number four.
Last item that we have is an agreement with Raco Industrial for the above-grade general work for the Rice project. This is a pretty significant contract as we move forward in the, in building the, the plant. Back in September of 2021, you'll recall, the Commission approved the purchase of the six generators for MAN, and then additionally approved the long-term maintenance agreement. So all, all of that has been, it has been approved, and now we are looking to do the above-grade work on the facilities to house these engines, which is ready to begin. Back in December of 2022, the city's purchasing department issued invitation to bid 3059, seeking qualified contractors for the design, material procurement, material fabrication, delivery, storage, and construction installation for the above-grade general work. We received three responses. Raco Industrial came in as the lowest bidder, and also upon evaluation was the most responsive, responsible, cost-effective bidder, although that initial bid price, as you can see, was So it is a significant cost and part of the project. The term of the agreement would be effective June 5th, subject to Commission's approval, and services would be anticipated to be completed in October of 2024, unless otherwise terminated or extended in accordance with the agreement. Just some highlights and some, some important points of this contract, because it is a significant contract. Raco is required to provide a performance bond in the total amount of the contract price in accordance with Florida statute. That will remain in effect during the entire term of the contract, as well as given the importance of meeting times, time, the schedule for commissioning of the generators. Liquidated damages are built into the contract. Basically comprised 2.5% of the contract price, or $30,000 per day at, for every day that the project is not completed after the substantial completion date, but they are capped at $1.5 million. Raco is also required to keep some, keep insurance, maintain general liability insurance for bodily, bodily injury and property damage, as well as excess liability coverage, and all, the city is also requiring additional insurance coverage for pollution liability, environmental liability, crane and/or workers' liability during the term of the agreement as well. The warranty work performed by Raco will be for a period of one year following substantial completion of the project. In the event that any reworking needs to be done or modification to that work, then that work will be subject to a new warranty period for completion that won't exceed a 24-month time period from substantial completion. The, Raco is also required to indemnify the city and hold the city harmless for any property damage or bodily injury arising from its work or any work of its subcontractors for negligent performance pursuant to the agreement. Raco will perform all the services in accordance with the terms and conditions set forth in the agreement and the city's conformed bid spec. The, Raco's total initial bid price was modified upon review by staff, and there was an additional $4,798,792.29 that was based on scope of work clarification and increased cost in, related to materials and subcontractors since the time of the initial bid was submitted. So the total contract price for services is now $58,797,375, and city staff is also requesting a contingency amount of $4 million, which will cover any minor modifications as the project moves forward that may occur. So the total, the total cost, including the contingency amount, is $62,797,375. That is included in Lakeland Electric's budget for the Rice Project, a portion of which is funded through our existing Energy System Revenue Bond, and some of which will be covered by the bond that you approved at the last Commission meeting, the additional $70 million bond that was approved. And this received unanimous favorable approval by the Utility Committee on Friday as well.
A motion to approve?
To approve.
Yep.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion among Commissioners or questions? Yes, Commissioner McLeod?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Thank you, Ramona, and this may be a question for Dave Holdner. Can you talk to us a little bit about Raco as a vendor? This is clearly a, a significant piece of the Rice Project, and, and those of you who are part of the selection team and are confident in them and their history with projects like this?
So, thank you, Dave Holdner, Power Plant Construction Manager. Thank you. As you guys know, Raco actually was the contractor that relocated and built our MACGT2 unit for us here recently. They also bid for us the below-ground portion of this here project, and we de, we deemed them not the most responsive because they left a lot of things out, and then in the end, we didn't end up going with them. In this here particular case, you know, as Ms. Ramona pointed out before, you know, we, we actually went out for bid for the initial above-ground contractor, and the bid came in, and we were basically sticker-shocked at the in, and we were basically sticker shocked at the price that came back. And so then we sent it back out and again, and we got the total of the three bids, the numbers that you said, and two of them came in really close, and Raco obviously was a lot better. So myself and our staff at Sergeant Lundy, we went through their contract with a fine-toothed comb, trying to make sure that everything was included, they understood what the scope was. They are more than capable of performing the work. They have the expertise on site. They proved it with MGT2. They have other projects out there, smaller scale, but all the building blocks to be able to accomplish this task that we have here. As far as the working with them, they've been on site now for two months. The commission approved them building the buildings for us. They are down-to-earth people. They speak the truth. They are focused on safety, doing a quality job, listening to us, making sure that we get what we paid for. And I have a very high confidence in them. The team that we have on site is one of the best teams that I've worked with.
Thank you.
Commissioner McLeod, thank you, Dave. Yes, Commissioner Simmons.
Yes, if you could, in simplified terms, explain what is above-ground work that they'll be doing.
Sure. Yes, sir. So, you know, because of the way the construction project and the projects run, and to minimize the amount of engineering time you have, what happens is that as you develop the projects and you get the scope, you release portions of the work to be worked to minimize the overall construction time period. And so what we did was, we first laid out the below-ground work, which the below-ground work was site development. It was moving a lot of earthworks. It was installing pipe that's underground, building structures to support the engine, the storm ponds and things like that. So now the plant is sitting here with foundations, ready for equipment to go on, all the underground infrastructure's in place. We have all the cable bus ducks and things in place, and now we're ready to pull in the cable, set the equipment, and build the plant on top of that. And so that's-
This is actually the plant itself that's being built?
This is actually, yes, sir. This is the plant itself that's going to reside on those foundations that we finished with Casey.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, this is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thanks, Ms. Sirianni. Thank you, Dave. All right, now we'll move into the audience portion of our agenda, and if you are someone from the public and you'd like to speak, you could do five minutes and come to the podium to my left, your right. Please state your name and your address. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address the commission? So you'll have five minutes to address the commission and state your name and your address, please. Thank you, Andrew and Jamin.
I'm Ms. Carol Castanero. I'm very sorry that I fell asleep here. I usually do that when it's cold. That's the effect the cold has on me. If you get some heat in here, I guess I'd stay awake. I'm sorry.
Can you state your address, please?
Yes, 411-
And you have five minutes.
Yes, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
4119 Glisten Drive, Lakeland, Florida. And the only person I seem to know is Mike. Mike, I know you from somewhere. My husband?
Yes.
That's it, Paul Castanero. And Kelly, you're still here, so I know two people. Again, I'm very sorry that I fell asleep. But I've been beaten up. I've been beaten up by people here that come over to my property, over there by 3316, by the Circle K. I've had enough, and these people are in my property. And again, I'm tired. Because of these people, I did miss my sister who died in Pittsburgh. I was unable to get there because they took over my property. Now, I need help. They don't have the right to take over my property. No one has that right. I don't know what to do next, except go to the governor. I've received no help from the police department. The only person that has helped me was Officer Renew. He's made some attempt. Again, I need help, and I'm here. No one, again, has that right to come on your property and take it. The police department, they've done nothing, except Officer Renew. Now, I don't know what to do next. These are drug people, drug users, and they've taken over my property. Yes, Mike?
Could you give us a kind of an overview of what the situation is, please?
At the present time, they're in my property. They're living there. That's what it is. Then they take the sheds, and they go in the sheds, and they sleep in there, and they stay overnight. These are drug people, and they've hit me. They think that they have the right to do this. Now, I think this is America. I don't think anyone has the right to put their hands on you. I am 84. I don't look it, but I am 84. I was a tomboy at one time, but I'm not going to fight. I'm not going to lay my hands on anyone, but they've laid their hands on me.
Ms. Castanero, if I may, just for clarification, when you're referring to your property, are you referring to-
Not my home.
Not your residence? You own another property?
Yes, that's the ones over there by Circle K. I live in Kathleen.
Okay, and it's by which Circle K?
Circle K, it's over there by North Lakeland Elementary School.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am. The city manager will help us look into this and see to, you know, what there is that we can do to support you and make sure that this gets cleaned up.
I want those people off of my property. I want them arrested for beating me up, for hitting me. Again, no one has the right to lay their hands on you.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's why I'm here.
Thank you.
And I have to say that all of you have been very nice. You're running a wonderful community, you know, program. You're good. You're very good, since years back. So if I could do it myself, I would, but I can't, not at 84.
Yes, ma'am.
So any help you could give me, Sarah, I'd be very glad and appreciate to have that.
Thank you. We'll have the city manager's office, Mr. Charouse will be looking into this and support you and work with the LPD as well.
Okay.
Thank you so much for coming. Appreciate it.
Well, get some heat in here.
Yeah.
Because I can't handle heat, I can't handle the cold.
Thank you, ma'am.
It puts me to sleep. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public that would like to address the commission? Seeing none, commissioner comments? We'll start with Commissioner Simmons today. Do you have-
I'm not, thank you.
Okay, commissioner music?
Yeah, I just wanted to encourage everyone that has not had an opportunity to go with Ellie and some of their staff down to Wyomama, there's the community down there that's doing the block energy, and I went with a group of them down there, and it was really interesting. You know, one of the biggest things that, and I talked about it a little bit here, you know, as a roofing contractor, when I go and work on roofs that have solar, I mean, it's inevitably, it's a problem. And they've really attacked it in an interesting way as far as how they own solar, they're kind of responsible for the product underneath, and it was a really interesting community, and it's a very well-appointed community. I think, Commissioner Madden, you've been there? I thought so, yeah. So anyway, I would just encourage, especially as we heard today, this is coming, and it's coming at an exponential rate for us to be able to get our heads around it, because I've kind of been resistant to it, just because of, you know, so many subsidies and so many things are required to be able to make it affordable, and people are, you know, we heard today, you know, seven to 10-year turnaround on that. How many people are staying in their homes seven to 10 years, right? So it's that equity has been an issue for me, but I really enjoyed that. So if you have an opportunity to head down there, reach out to our representatives at Ellie and set that up, because it was, I nerded out a little bit, and I felt like Commissioner Madden, I'll be honest with you.
[laughter]
You know, I was down there just learning as much as I could, and a lot of it was over my head, but Mr. Beckham was there and just, it was great. It was good. So if you guys can fit it into your schedule, I recommend it.
Awesome, thank you. Commissioner Madden.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Three things. The first one is, I, this is kind of a question that is not time-sensitive necessarily. I've heard that the gas company, I don't know if it's Peoples', but has difficulty with our streetscape downtown. So that was just one thing that if you, you know, if restaurants are trying to locate downtown, you know, you kind of know all of the things that they might need, and that was something new for me to hear, that when we, the way we do our streetscape makes it difficult, I guess, for them, you know, it's not like a yard that you can put a gas line through, you know, for restaurants that need gas to be able to cook the food. So, you know, knowing that we're at a time of growth, I know that at the Catapult Board, you know, we were incubating some new restaurants and, you know, getting them from concept to brick and mortar. Sometimes it requires a food truck, you know, or something in the middle, you know, but I know that Lakelanders, obviously, we love, you know, our restaurants, and it seems like maybe there's sufficient infrastructure, you know, 1961 Harry's, that side of downtown, but when you try to get into other areas of downtown, if there's not a current gas line, to get the gas line there seems to be really difficult. So I guess that would be a question maybe for like Brian Ruiz and his team, or-
Commissioner, are you referring to difficulty in terms of the expense for them to do that, or difficulty-
I think it's to get, yeah, like to disrupt our streetscape, like how we do our sidewalks and how we do them. Also, I'm sure it's expense. Yeah, everything's about expense when you're in business, but I don't even know, I don't know if it's prohibited or if it's allowed, but just it would be costly to redo the streetscape, or if it's the way, I'm not exactly sure. So I just, I'd like more information from our team, instead of just hearing from folks in the community who say it's just impossible to get gas downtown, you know, just kind of maybe what some of those obstacles, maybe we could get creative in some of the areas of downtown that are not as, that we'll see investment, maybe don't have investment now. You know, I just want to, that's something new to me. Like, you know, I know that we have older aging water infrastructure, and I've had some small businesses who've had the expense of replumbing their building and then having to connect, you know, to older pipes or have to fix those things, and that's a cost, or electric, you know, but I just, the situation with gas was new to me, like, but, you know, I'm not a restaurateur. So just, you know, kind of wanted to see, even like with the CRA, they might know, you know, with that too, like trying to get restaurants downtown, if that is truly a difficulty, like in the areas where there's not, it's ripe for development, you know, so I just don't want it to be an obstacle to get restaurants. And then the second thing is, I just wanted to give a shout out to the NAACP for hosting the Memorial Day event again, on the Saturday of Memorial Day weekend. It's, it just was a very somber, you know, wonderful way to spend Saturday morning in our Veterans Memorial Park, to just remember everyone who's given the ultimate sacrifice for the freedoms that we enjoy. So I wanted to thank the NAACP for that beautiful service. And then third is, Polk County schools are out, so I guess it's officially summer here in Lakeland, Florida.
Great. Commissioner Reed? Commissioner McLeod?
Just on the note of summer, I wanted to give a shout out to our Parks and Rec staff because we have a lot of personnel who are putting on summer programs, and when you go to Kelly Rec or Gandy Pool and Simpson Parks open now, there are kids and families everywhere, and I know it takes a lot to run all of that, so they're doing tremendous work in the community this time of year.
Right. And the last thing I'll add is, we're hosting the Ridge League of Cities on Thursday evening, right? Thursday? Okay, I'm trying to keep my day straight. And so that will be, all of the Ridge League cities from around our area will be coming together, their elected officials, as well as their staff, so it'll be at the RP Funding Center Thursday evening. I highly encourage my fellow commissioners to join us. It's a wonderful event. It's also a night that we highlight the scholarship recipients, so the Ridge League supports vocational and undergraduate scholarships from students throughout that area, and they can apply, and it's always a great motivational evening to learn about those students and what they're going to do next in their careers. Hopefully, some go into public service, is what we hope for as well. So thank our staff and team for organizing that. They always do a lovely job with it. And we have July 4th, or July 3rd, Red, White &amp; Kaboom coming up, and so that's a huge event for our comms team and everybody throughout the City of Lakeland Public Works. It's a Herculean effort, and the MEMS family, we really appreciate them continuing to support that, so our community can come together and celebrate Independence Day. So we'll have a commission meeting, I think, before that, or maybe that day, so we will talk about it again, but just in case, I don't want to forget it. So, thank you all, and thanks for the communications team this morning, helping me out. You guys are awesome, as usual, and we really appreciate you. Seeing no further business, we are adjourned.